To get a number that you want to start with.
Let's start with three.
Three.
Currently, I'm eight people down.
How many down eight?
Eight.
And these drivers can also file snow just not in your larger CBL vehicles?
In the smaller vehicle.
In the smaller.
Tons of ten and a half people sitting out.
Pretty much pickup trucks.
Large, yeah, large pickups.
What is the wage that you are?
Well, right now, my truck driver sign operators are at nineteen thirty-four an hour for twenty twenty-two. I'd like to keep it non-CBL at eighteen.
Eighteen dollars a year?
Mm-hmm. And I've got another job description being reviewed right now for labor, which will require any license. I'd like to have them at seventeen dollars eventually when we get to that. Again, it would be out of that same pool of people that I have.
I was just about to say. So I'm looking at your sign man. He's just the one that holds the signs, is that what they do?
His main job is putting, putting signs up and down.
Okay. I just.
What's the rate on seven?
Nineteen thirty-four, that's why I'm questioning why you want your truck driver lower than.
The sign man also does a lot of the truck driving duties, so.
That's what I'm saying, and he's at nineteen thirty-four an hour, and then you're asking for an eight dollar an hour just truck driver.
Eighteen dollar an hour, non-CBL.
Non-CBL, so the sign men and then our CBL drivers or no?
Yes, the truck driver sign, the operators are all nineteen thirty-four.
But do they have a.
They all have CBLs.
And you're taking that out of the fourteen number? So it would actually save us money, it would be cheaper, right? Because you're paying eleven people nineteen thirty-four instead of fourteen.
Correct.
And you're paying three eighteen, so.
Let's help the flexibility of non-CBL.
You have the ability to get them hired. The ability to get them hired.
Yeah, and then we'll work them up.
I make a motion to take away from fourteen, the truck driver position, into three truck driving positions, non-CBL, at a rate of eighteen dollars an hour.
Second.
We've got a motion to, by Trace Martin, pull three truck drivers from the CBL line into non-CBL, saving the dollars thirty-four per hour. Second, I call Ryder. Any further discussion?
Is the rate in the motion?
Dollars now.
Eighteen, yeah.
So this is your amendment to the salary ordinance.
All right.
Okay, those in papers, signify by saying aye. I have those who oppose, say aye. Motion three six.
Thank you. Moving the document, please, the new job description.
Motion made by Josh Plin, seconded by Paul Ryder, to accept the new job description. Further discussion? Those in papers, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say aye. That motion three six.
I forgot to say that I emailed the reports on the member behave. Are there any questions about the reports?
Nope.
Couple of things that are not. Dates for joint session with the commissioners, I'm trying to be proactive, they've got a meeting on Monday. If you could give me some dates that might be available to meet with them about the ARCA request.
I have a question also too. I've seen that the edit requests and that all came from, that they were very, a lot of edit funds and that. Are we going to want to discuss edit funds or?
They have to present their edit budget first.
So they have to present that first? I was just wondering if we could do it. When we did the ARCA fund.
That's probably.
Too much? They have not even decided what they're going to give them money for. That's on Monday. Then they, then we do an additional and then we do it two. So do you have any open dates that are good for you, like the first? Like, what about December fifth at one o'clock or, you know, anybody?
What's the, that's their meeting, is that what you're saying?
That's their. Yeah, on the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
So the, of November, of November, if December the fifth at one o'clock would work, I'm sure it would, might work for them, I do not know. So can you? Give me another date, two dates.
Do they have a meeting on the nineteenth or are we thinking so?
It's under nineteenth, it's usually the Christmas program.
That's what I'm doing.
Programs.
So it's not going to be a very.
No, it's a meeting.
They do have a full meeting on that.
You have a meeting and you have Christmas. And you're in charge.
I think the president isn't sure.
Does the fifth work for anybody? Back to the question at hand.
I'm asking for dates someplace else.
The fifth works for me.
The fifth work.
Fifth, and how about another date? The twelfth?
Yeah.
Twelve. Alternatively, twelve?
Wait, 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 wait.
It's just an extra day. It has no meeting on it, just.
So we're throwing the nineteenth out completely?
Nineteenth is not going to work.
Okay, when is our December meeting, is it the fifteenth?
It is, yeah.
Yes. Do it before that.
Yeah, I would say that would be my alternative date.
Yeah, I would like to.
How about after our meeting or before?
I don't really care.
I would add.
After.
I do not want to be having to stop. I mean, we have, we have a hard break at one thirty, but I don't see how we can. Do you need a motion this month or additional?
Should we just start at one o'clock and we done at one thirty?
No, we have, there's, this room is used at one thirty.
Yeah, I know.
That's what I'm saying, it should be after this meeting, not at one o'clock.
Do it at eleven.
Yeah, something. I'd advertise it for eleven. Well, we can sort later, we have to start early.
We're going to be one day.
Okay, we could start our meeting an hour early that day.
I don't care. Just starting at nine o'clock.
But you want to do eleven thirty instead? Let's do eleven thirty.
Yeah, I mean, well, I just advertise it for a little.
Okay.
And then we run long.
So let's go, do December fifth then?
I, I don't know.
I'm going to ask them for, I want them to do this, because you guys can never, or they can never.
December fifth?
So I want to have two days of making this.
Or December fifth at one o'clock?
December fifteenth.
Or the fifteenth at eleven.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. The other thing I've got here is to pass out to you, this was a last minute thing.
Oh, I don't want you to pass out.
If you take one and pass it around, and it's not what you think it is, it's a real tax on this that we have since two thousand and eighteen, I believe. And you had someone come in and ask you about the small trailers compared to trucks. So this is just for your information only, because we can't do anything until next August, or before August of next year.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
The other thing is the security team. There will be an executive session for the security community on November the twenty-ninth at twelve P.M. And I believe thought that you were on that, so I just wanted to make sure you knew that. Got it? And I believe.
And what time was that?
At twelve noon, at the annals.
Do we need a motion this month or do we need to be doing it next month? Oh, no, this one, excuse me, transfers.
Ah.
Yeah, you did. That would be helpful because.
Do you need to do like two hundred fifty dollars, is that right? So I move to give that the authority between now and the end of the year to do additionals up to two hundred, two hun- two hundred dollars. Transfers, excuse me, transfers.
For now, total? That would be number.
Second.
Usually, I'm not complaining, it'd be a lot easier for me. But you usually do it from the fifteenth to the end of the year. So you're okay?
That's a good feature.
Awesome. That's a good, that's an extra.
Maybe we'll overturn them all in the last meeting here.
Well, you've done a lot of them today.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure that that's, it doesn't matter what category they're in. I mean, I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, whatever, I mean, we've always given you the, whatever authority, up to two hundred dollars. And give you an extra reason.
Giving back.
See, you have to do it all in the last meeting.
Giving back the authorities for transfer up to two hundred dollars through the end of the year.
And we'll still be on the agenda and we'll see what she gets like.
Got a motion by Josh Plin, seconded by Paul Ryder. Any further discussion?
So is there usually a, a lot of them, a small amount, or could you make a list and put on the agenda for next month so we could see that? Or is that?
It's mostly payrolls that are like ten cents or a dollar or, you know, whatever, so the, the funds don't go negative.
Kind of like this area, the plan that was about nine dollars and eighty-five cents, so that takes more time to put it on here than it does.
Well, there's just like. I mean, there's usually a couple dozen.
I'll have copies, I can let you see.
Okay, motion second on the floor. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say aye.
Second.
Thank you, I hope for claims a lot, because people don't want to turn their claims in because they might be fifty cents over or something, so, thank you.
Okay, that brings us down to Kent. Of course, we already covered the rate for the non-CBL.
All right, thank you for that. And I just wanted to come for you again, trying to get our, my opportunity up to seven percent increase up most of the other county employees received. At the last time, a four percent increase was approved, which is over here, over the annual wages that first deputies would be making. The difference is, she looks four hours a week more than the first deputies. So if you look at an annual basis, she should be making more annually. Or she could be making more annually. So I'm proposing to bring her up to the seven percent increase for twenty twenty-three, based on her forty hours per week. Now, with her hourly wage up to nineteen oh three per hour, or thirty-nine five ninety-two forty per week per year.
And that's getting her up equal to the first deputy.
It'd be close, it'd be over.
Well, I mean, technically.
Well, actually, their hour, the first deputy's hourly wage.
Thirty-five five ninety-four.
That's the annual.
So you divide that by eighteen seventy-two hours per year. I think the first deputies this year are making nineteen oh one per hour. And post-manager from highway next year will be nineteen oh three, if we gather up to a seven, seven percent increase.
But you, did you just say you'd go to nineteen fifty-five?
I know.
Oh, nineteen oh three.
Sorry.
So is this change in next year's budget or is it the budget?
Next year.
It's been turned in.
Twenty twenty-three.
To the state to be approved. So everything.
I think we can handle this, so it hasn't first year.
That's what I was going to say, I mean, I'm not for, against, I'm saying we cannot change the budget now, let's go next year.
Motion taken.
Theoretically, we could change salary, or that's what we have to make salary.
So that's right, we have voted through it for next year.
The salary.
Correct.
Correct.
That would be one of the, yeah. I think we've all had this, especially toward, I mean, is there any change in anybody's stance?
Well, the, the, I mean, the only thing that has materially changed is the, is the forty versus thirty-six, which I think is a valid argument. Like, we, I mean, our argument was that we're not paying this person more than a part, than a, than a.
First deputy.
First deputy.
Right.
But this person is working more than a first deputy. So, I mean, it's worth considering it.
You do have, again, I'm not for arguments. You have others that are same slot. You have your son-in-law that she has come in every year and said, I want forty dollars, I don't work together. And the extension office, that was the one, I believe. So I, I'm just throwing those out so you guys can.
Okay. I think those are things valid, not going to discuss.
And maybe all these to be handled when we do the salary.
Salary.
Yeah. Can't change something, doesn't it?
Thanks, yeah.
Thanks. Can't change your budget, it's. It's not even approved yet.
Yeah, we'd be, we would be pulled out, but at the bottom of the barrel, we don't want to do that.
Okay, Cindy Harman, please. And how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. Hey, this is the first time I've ever presented in front of the council, so thank you for allowing me to talk today. Again, Cynthia Harmon is my name, I'm an attorney in Flora. I have represented the area planning commission since two thousand and eight, so not happy to be there, that's always a good thing.
Yeah.
I know that during the time that I have worked with them, we've seen many changes and improvements in the aspiration of this office and the services that they provide to the citizens of the county. Many of these changes have come about through requirements of state. I think you're aware that our area plan director, because of the locations coming in several areas that are in the flood zones, the requirements of the zoning administrator or the area plan director have greatly increased, as has their requirement for education and licensing and to immune education. But what this has created, though, is the requirement that the area plan director has to be out of the office a lot more than what they used to do. Therefore, in two thousand and twenty-one, this council approved a job description change for the employee. Our office only has one employee. And we do appreciate that change and that recognition. She is now a full-time employee. And her requirement, the things that she does for the office have greatly increased also. And there are many, many times that you'll walk into the courthouse, and she's the one there. She's the one helping the citizens, explaining how things work, taking the paperwork, taking the money, taking the calls. And our biggest concern here, and I know that Cameron Spence has said it before, our biggest concern here is when the job description, when the job description for this position was changed, the hourly rate of pay was not. When it was changed in two thousand and twenty-one, the hourly rate was fourteen dollars and fifty-eight cents per hour, which was the same rate as first clerks and clerical assistants. At that time, it was acknowledged that that was going to have to change. However, it's not. There have been the normal increases that have been given to employees, but it's never been taken to the point to recognize the, the things that this physician is responsible for. In, in asking this, I'm asking that, first of all, you look at the job descriptions. And I know that the highway department, he just came and he's trying to make sure that his employee that he's in the office and takes care of things while he's out of the office, is properly compensated, and I agree with that. I think if you will look at the job descriptions of the two positions, they're very, very similar. In other words, because the directors of those departments have to be out of the office a lot, you have to have someone there who's ready and willing and able to take care of whatever needs to be taken care of and to serve the, the citizens properly. So we have a discrepancy of at least two dollars an hour currently, and, and probably more, depending on what is determined as you go forward with the other positions. So I am just asking that you don't treat this job differently than you would any other, based on what the requirements are. Both of these posi- this position is very crucial to the continued use of the operation of the office. And the, the next thing I hope you can do, when you consider the request, is this should be based solely on responsibilities in comparison to other similar positions, and keep all individuals and personalities out of the decision-making process. I know Cameron can be very, very, I don't know. Passionate. He's very passionate. He's very passionate about his employee, which is, which is wonderful. But you as keepers of the funds of the county, what you have to understand is that we all know that these people can change at any time. We never know when we're going to have to be hiring someone new. But we have to be able to have a job description and a pay amount that will attract the type of person we need in this office. And I don't believe it's there right now. We need to be able to provide the best available candidates so we can serve the, the citizens the best. So I'm just asking that you look at what, what is there. You look at the job descriptions, you look at the responsibilities of this job, and make sure that it's properly compensated. I'm not here to say I'm looking for nineteen dollars an hour. I am just saying that I know that in, under the current twenty twenty-three, I believe she's set to get sixteen dollars and sixty-nine cents an hour. That, again, is, you mentioned line with some of the first deputies in offices. So it's not recognizing the responsibility that this office has. The other thing I would say is, continue with using the recognized as good result. And some. I, you have to be fair in it, that's why we have job descriptions. So you have to, you can't do unfair practices in regard to how you pay your people.
So is she making fifty-five, fifty-eight right now?
Pardon?
Is she making fourteen fifty-eight?
No, from two thousand and twenty-one, she was fifteen sixty.
Can, can you restate?
No, no, no. That's this year, fifteen sixty.
Fifteen sixty.
Right, for two thousand and twenty-two, it's been fifteen dollars and sixty-seven. It's the twenty-one, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, in twenty-one, it was fourteen fifty-eight.
So what, Tracy, what do you think we ought to do here?
I have always advocated for this position. I think it's very unfair that she doesn't get paid when the rest of the office managers get paid. I've said that.
So what do they get paid this year, the, the rest of the office?
You, you have the salary ordinance in front of you, right?
They need to be closer to the eighteen dollars an hour, which in order to get her up, in order to get her up to where the other highway manager is, it would be a two dollar, two dollars and fifteen cents an hour rate.
Percentage of. Well, so if, if we're going to get our backs pushed against the wall and under threat of litigation, then I'm going to make a vote. I'm not saying you are, I'm saying if that's a concern of this council, that you're worried about that, then I would make the motion that we take this back to a part-time position. And that will resolve all the problems.
That. It will not resolve all the problems because.
And will resolve the, the problems of this unfair balance of labor.
Well, it would solve that problem, but it won't solve the problem when you had an area plan director leave for how many months? I mean, who are you going to have run that office if somebody needs? I mean, I just don't think it, I am reading the job descriptions, I've, I've said this, I'll say it for my one last final time. I've read the job descriptions, there is not much differentiationality in them. I don't understand why she is so low. She is the lowest paid person, and I don't understand why, when her responsibilities and her duties are comparable to four other job descriptions.
Okay, if that's the case, I mean, we've already set the budget for next year. We've said as a body, we're not changing anybody's salary. So the, the, the step that would have to be taken, if you're going to keep the scales the same way, keep this pay the same, is to change your job duties back. It's the only thing that, it's the only action to take. If we're going to stick by, we're going, we're going to stick to this budget. Because otherwise, we're spending a lot.
Correct.
So, I mean, if, if this is a valid concern.
But you just sat there and said that if it's worth looking at for the highway department.
Huh?
You just sat there and said it's worth looking at for the highway department.
This was.
If we were going to set in stone, she would get her three percent or four percent, whatever she got, and it would have been in discussion. But you said it was up for discussion or worth looking at. So it's worth looking at.
I didn't, I didn't vote in favor, but I just said it is a material change.
Because it was a forty hour person.
So.
That's how I've always told it, but that's just my thought.
So, I mean, I mean, that, I mean, that's the. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess you made a motion, did you or not?
I did.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, we, we compensate her this year, two dollars more per hour to get her even with the first deputy.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
That's not, that's not, that's not equitable to a first deputy.
First deputies get nineteen oh one.
First deputies are salary positions.
Correct.
We're talking about an hourly position.
You need to compare it to the other office managers.
And, and I would, I have issue with that, too. Her job description as administrative assistant. The only other administrative assistant in the salary ordinance is the highway department.
Her position is office administrator by the description that was adopted by the county council.
Which you are correct, it is the same, it is, that's what she's called with yours, and then also.
Well, just a point of order, there's no second on a motion, we're doing a lot of debate here.
Who is the sessionist, Bob? Office administrator. Office administrator.
I'm looking at the salary ordinance.
I'm looking at it, says administrative assistant.
Does that need to be cleaned up?
I need to look at action about the top of the page. The job description numbers.
But once again, I'm looking at the duties of the employee.
So.
And at budget time, I did want to raise the third dollar an hour, but this did not happen.
We have a motion.
Thank you.
Without a second.
If you can amend the salary ordinance at any time, correct, after being referred.
For two thousand and twenty-three?
Correct.
Is that now what you're asking me to ask for two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes.
Yes.
We've got to remember, too, this is a separate fund, it's not actually out of county general, so it wouldn't affect the overall general fund budget per se, other than a little bit of tax rate we give for our funds.
I want to clarify that, any, any rate that competes against the general fund, which APC, Health Department, all of those, any budget in those decreases the amount of money that goes without it. So, like, they, I mean, I'm arguing, Donnie, but like, it, it does it directly, but it affects the rate. And if there's less rate, and this, granted, this is a small number relative to the total tax budget, but, you know, it does, in, in the short answer.
So, I'll make a final comment, I think this works a bit more than I thought.
And I don't. Okay, thank you, tell me who you. Okay. Since I missed the manor discussion because of your, Tracy, would you want to, the next item is redemption for the assistant position.
What would you like?
Bring me up, bring me up to date on what happened in that discussion, what's.
Well, per our discussion, it was announced by Bill Brown that Martha would be stepping down.
Okay.
So, the assistant position is, they want to fill.
To train.
To train.
To take over prior to.
My concern was, and what I was, my opinion was, that they're going to run out of time. So, why are you going to fill an assistant position when you can fill an administrative position that needs to jump in and get started and hopefully find someone with some experience, which in the audience, there were people that had obviously applied, that did have experience, that were interested in it. It was kind of no decision made about, but I think it calmed the efforts of, nobody wants to close the manor, and that the manor needs to be put on the front burner, and the commissioners need to make sure that it is running.
Our duty is to make sure that the budget passes the state.
Right.
And so, if, if we don't defund the majority of this, all of it, it hasn't been used this year, it affects their, what is it called, twelve line or whatever, and if they're, I won't say it lightly, but it's, it, it's every dollar that we don't take out of this is held at the state, and they're going to look at it and say, this, this won't fund. So, we have to make it look like it will. This, reducing this will help their budget pass.
So, we read it, we, we made it known that i- if they need something coming, if they somehow jump up to twenty-five people, we will refund the food and, and look at the assistant coming back, but as of right now.
I don't think we said that, but.
No, we didn't say that. That was not said.
But I, I, I think it was very clear that we're going to work with them to, to, to do it. I mean, it gave no specific prescriptions were applied, that, that, what from, like, what has to get done today? This needs to be reduced by the amount that has already not been used. So, because theoretically, they could spend, because it is appropriated for thirty-eight thousand, they could spend, could spend thirty-eight thousand dollars between now and the end of the year, that's how the state looks at it. So, if we reduce this by, so the thirty-eight thousand oh fifty-eight over twelve months is thirty-one thousand, or, excuse me, thirty-one hundred seventy-one dollars fifty cents a month. So, Beth just told me there's three payroll cycles between now and the end of the year. So, in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars, we, we should reduce that amount by.
Actually, we said six, it was a little bit over five, but just rounding it up to six, just to be on the safe side, so I don't have to go through it again. The other thing, too, is state board of accounts probably would not take exception, because if you don't have it in next year, and that assistant, assistant does not move up to the superintendent, you're going to have to have the first two weeks of pay to pay them in the current manager. So, that's why I put a little extra in there, so they could encumber maybe.
Are you saying?
Encumber for one year to the next.
State, state board of council will not take into that in, in this kind of a situation.
Are you, are you saying that they could go ahead and hire the assistant and get him trained the rest of this year? She's going to leave December thirty-first, is what Bill Brown said.
That's what you guys had said the last time.
Yeah, but I mean, what you're, what you're saying, all we're doing is, is saying that they can't spend the money that's already passed.
Right, okay, that's what we're saying.
Right.
So, so you're saying.
They don't need the thirty-eight thousand.
So, so we're lowering the thirty-eight thousand down to where, let's say, to what?
We would lower, let's just say thirty-two thousand, it's a nice round number.
Okay.
We're, we're saying that you can only spend six thousand between now and the end of the year.
Okay, which allows them to hire the assistant superintendent. That's my goal.
But, right.
We got six people applied or whatever, so we want.
Right, but if, if we don't have, I mean, if we leave that on there, they could theoretically spend.
All right.
Say what?
She's, he said there was six that applied, and I've only had two, and I know one, I think another one is out there.
Okay.
But, so my motion is to reduce that line to, um, by thirty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second to reduce the assistant position amount. Let's set it thirty-eight oh fifty-eight to, uh, by thirty-two thousand, the amount that is passed. Second, tenth. Any further discussion?
Twenty-six thousand fifty-eight.
Yes.
So, so, again, I just want to reiterate that we are, we, she is free to hire an assistant superintendent and train her for the rest of the year.
It has been advertised, and whatever the last day is, she should know that. I can't, I, I don't remember what, how long it's been advertised. Because the other thing, too, is when, I think it's, so, um, at the end of the year, before Martha leaves, it has to be advertised for the new position. It doesn't just blow through.
Right.
And it has to be applications taken for the year.
She doesn't automatically.
So, whoever, I mean, Martha needs to remember to advertise that.
Which was.
Right?
Which was.
I completely follow that, man.
The assistant, if they hire an assistant, and Martha leaves December thirty-first, it's not an automatic move up. She, whoever it is would have to apply, and it has to be closed to for two weeks. So, she needs to do it by November, December.
I believe six thousand and fifty-eight dollars in that account to satisfy the potential assistant.
And then, if, if you would allow to encumber some of this money for next year, that would help that budget for next year to pay the last two weeks of the year. Does that make sense?
So, you have a motion. It's kind of irrelevant, because it's not on the next year's.
Yes, yes, I've got a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
I, I just said I've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
To reduce.
Because it's unusual circumstances.
Well, you just said it would be, we don't have that in there, so the, you want me to advertise for, how are we going to do that? For the, the assistant for next year.
I mean, the, the last that I knew, the, the assistant was going to transition to the director at the first of the year.
Correct. If, if that is what happens, but it might not happen that way.
No, it's not.
Right, but I mean, that's the budget that has been passed.
Right, and then we could look at our assistant next year if we wanted to.
We would have to change the budget.
Yeah. But we could do that next year.
Next year.
That's what we should do.
That's what I'm saying, we'll do the scenarios, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that this is going to happen, but if the assistant doesn't augment, if doesn't get the job, you're having two.
Well, I mean, so they need to, I mean, the commissioners need to know that there's only one management position available next year.
That's how it works, we have to still advertise, and we have to apply.
That's what I'm saying, they need to know that, that, they need to, not like on December thirty-first or January first, they need to make it a perfect change, because it's only, it's already.
Because for our discussion with them, we just went up to the end of the year, was my outlook.
I understand that, and I know they know that, I mean, but I'm just saying off the wall, if that person doesn't get the job, so you're just telling them that if they're going to automatically move them up, that's not the rules and personnel policy.
And I stated in the meeting that they would have to reapply, and then, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was a long discussion about how this was going to go.
But what I'm saying, I don't care about all that, I know the rules for that, but where's the money? So, your question is, if the assistant doesn't get the job for the administrator, come January, how are you going to pay the assistant? Are we going to, is that, you're going to just not have an assistant and fire her?
There is no assistant in two thousand and twenty-three. There is no, there is no assistant.
Correct, that's right.
Right.
But in two thousand and twenty-three, we can't.
Okay, so you're, you're going to, if that happens, unemployment will kick in, and the county will pay for that. That's why it will not be Carol Land, it will be the county.
This is why I said hiring assistant at this point in time for six weeks is just not computing with my mind, whereas you need that administrator. I didn't understand why they were going to hire an assistant for six days.
Yes.
I watched the meeting on Debbie's website, and I thought the commissioners, you know, that they wanted to hire an assistant to finish out this year, but I understood them to, to realize that there needs to be two positions. You know, there needs to be the, the administrator and an assistant. So, I guess maybe you need to get with the commissioners.
I guess that's what I thought.
Yes.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah.
I took that from the, the audience.
But there's no money, and you're, 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 you're helping a pickle, I don't know. But it is what it is.
As Martha, Martha, Martha formally submitted her resignation?
No.
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 And she has plenty of time.
Okay, that brings us down to additionals, we're going to have, we've got one, Doug, the EMS for gas and oil.
Who do you prefer?
We've got a motion and a second, motion made by Josh, signed by Tracy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign, measure carry six zero. And the additionals to be advertised, I think everyone has a copy, uh, from Nick. He feels that this probably will get him, potentially through the end of the year. There's just an awful lot of things, transcripts and audio and security and. All those things that go in.
This is just to be advertised, so we don't have to, it'll take this in objection.
Consent is advertised, isn't it?
Yes, consent advertised. Consent advertised.
Get advertised.
Yep, get advertised, girl. Okay, um, is there anything else to come before this county council, or you want from the audience?
Just, I was going to ask if you were going to discuss what Josh brought up about trying to figure out how you're going to handle the additional funding for the trial that you said you were going to do at the end of the year.
Thanks, Jack. Do, do we need to do that to Debbie? Well, we discussed that we would try to.
What's your thought?
Get that topic.
I think it needs to have its own time. I think we need, yes, I think it should have its own time, but I don't know if that's appropriate.
What did you say?
I think it needs to have its own time.
Its own line, right?
But I don't know how you're going to fund it, and I'd like to talk with Jackie, if you don't mind, and.
Hi. I was going to suggest the same thing, I would like to talk about, even, I think you could reach out to other counties that have had, um, large expenses for trials like this, that could lend some tips and tricks for how they handled it.
Or you could also maybe without, just put a line in the county general line, or line.
In the commissioners or in each individual department?
Just the, no.
I like the idea.
Just the idea of having it.